Am I live? Am I live? Um, I think I'm live. Oh, there we go. What is up guys? Andrew here and welcome to ComicBooker. All things comics from a creator. So it's Tuesday night. Uh, I did, I did the stream a couple of nights ago. I figured let's just pick up where I left off. Um, uh, what is up? The Spectral Verse, Moritaka Ishida and Kasatka, welcome back, welcome back. Um, so yeah, I wanna jump on this page. So, um, I figured let's just get into it. Uh, I just, I just got a script from DC tonight. So this is actually gonna be the last graphic novel session, at least for Secret Heart Attack for a little bit, while I focus on like making those pages really good. Um, so I'm gonna make, try to make this count. I mean, I'll still be working on this, um, here and there, but you know, when I get a pro commission like that, I wanna like, you know, really do a good job there. Make it, you know, as best as possible. And I can't really do two comics at the same time at least, you know, unless there's like a space between. So, um, yeah, all my focus is gonna be on that gig. They haven't announced it yet, but, um, it's just 10 pages, it's just 10 pages. So don't freak out MatterSource Studios. Uh, it's just 10 pages and it'll probably be done, um, probably, uh, August. So it's not gonna be super long and I'm gonna jump back to Secret Heart Attack. But I'm gonna have to take a break from this to focus on, uh, the paying gig. You know what I mean? Um, yeah. And, and that's only cuz honestly, like, uh, between this and my day job and, you know, uh, I, I just, I have to manage my time. I can't do everything at the same time. So as, as fun as everything is, um, I gotta focus on one thing at a time. Just so everything is as good as it can possibly be. You know what I mean? Um, so yeah, this is gonna pause for a sec, but we're at a good place, we're at a good place with it. Uh, I'm really very excited. This is Giga Boy over here and, um, he's really cool. We're gonna get into a bunch of these people in this issue. So it's gonna be fun. Um, I'm also, I'm still aiming, I'm not sure. I'm still aiming to have this done and have this out this year. So, you know, Secret Heart Attack is, is not like completely gonna be in the back burner. I still care about it. It's just, you know, I can only draw one thing at a time. So that is why. Um, anyway, if you are new to this, um, uh, this is Draw With Me and the idea is that, um, uh, I'm just gonna do a little work session where I draw and talk about stuff. I'm gonna check the chat every so often. Uh, but hopefully while I'm doing this, um, you're also, you know, drawing. Maybe you have a sketchbook out. Maybe you have a project that you've been wanting to work on. And, uh, basically let's just work together. You know what I mean? Get some good stuff down. I've, uh, I've set this livestream for about an hour. So we're gonna go until like nine. And, um, uh, let's try to get some good work done together, guys. I'm gonna put a little music on and I will answer stuff. Uh, I'm gonna check the chat. But I'm gonna try to do this all at the same time, yeah. MatterSource Studios asks, "What pen do you use for Procreate? I have the app, but don't know what pen to use." Um, MatterSource, uh, honestly, I would use the default brushes first. You know, the, the main stuff like, um, well, maybe I can show you here. Give me a sec. So Procreate comes with a bunch of default brushes here. The inking brushes here, Mercury. Uh, not, not one, not that one. What is going on with this? That's wrong. Oh, there we go. Yeah, these brushes are pretty good. I like them. Uh, the only thing is if I were you, I would go into them. Go to, where is that? Properties, here, stabilization and just turn that off. You know, I don't need, I don't need it to be too stabilized. You, you can put it up like a little bit if you have like a shaky jittery hand or, or you're like me and you draw on the bus and you need just a little extra help making it smooth. Uh, but otherwise, you know, um, that's pretty good. Uh, actually, I'm gonna ink with this right now just to show you, um, how good it can be, you know? This is Baskerville and it is one of the main default brushes in Procreate. And look how nicely it, the line has like a variation. You know what I mean? I can go from thick to thin. Oh my God, I actually love this. I just chose a default brush, but this is actually really nice. Hmm. Yeah, like that feels really good. I like the bounce on it now that I've turned the stabilization off. Yeah, you just gotta watch out for the stabilization. It is, um, you know, a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, drawing programs these days use it, especially like the, the PC drawing programs. But I find with the iPad, the, the Apple pencil is just so good. You don't really need all of that stabilization on it. So, um, yeah, I don't recommend it. I recommend just going with what you have. You know, I also like it when it's not that smooth. I like seeing a bit of grit and grain. You know what I mean? I want, I want it to be dural. I wanna feel the, the humanity of the artist. And you can't, you start to lose that a bit when you stabilize too much, you know, if it's too clean. Then again, there are artists like, like David La Fuente, who have like really clean styles. I don't know. It really depends on what, what look you want. But yeah, this is Baskerville. Try this, the one I'm using right now. This is pretty great. And that way you don't have to buy brushes cuz honestly, once you start buying brushes, you're gonna be like me. You're gonna have like a big problem where you're, you're spending so much. And then you have like this insane library of brushes that you don't use 90% of the time, you know? Um, wait, all the chat blew up. Take your time, good faulty burden rush. Uh, thank you, Kasatka. Moritaka says, "I only use default brushes and so far I'm happy to result." Yeah, yeah, they're great, right? Um, Miguel Aviles Jenkins, welcome sir. "Hi Andrew was able to stream my iPad on Twitch as you told last Sunday." Oh, great, great. I gotta follow you if you're, uh, if you're on YouTube. Yeah, try to, well, I'm just gonna look you up. Um, Moritaka says, "I like to use a technical pen for my inking." Technical pens also good. So there, it, you know, some artists, uh, some comic artists, uh, there's a pretty like distinct divide. You can see people who are, at least in the traditional inking space, people who are brush people. And usually that means they like to have like a wide variation in line. And by, by that, I mean like thin, thick lines and then thin again and all that stuff. Uh, and then there are people who are, um, you know, technical pen inkers. The people who use rot grings and microns. I'm, I'm more of a technical pen person. Um, when I use a brush, I find that my, um, it gets really messy and I like drawing small. So the technical pen really works well for me. Um, but yeah, try to think of like what kind of artist you are, you know, what, um, where your temperament lies and, uh, what you want your work to look like. Or, or just experiment with, with either and see which one you prefer. Um, I've honestly started glomming onto like various other things. Where am I? I feel like I'm on a weird layer. Oh, there we go. Let's merge that together. There we go. So confusing when you're like on different layers. Alright. There's Gigapoid Done and Dusted. Uh, I wanna... Yeah, all this stuff, uh, like floating around. This is Psychoplasm, which is part of his power set, right? He, his creature is a manifestation of his subconscious. It's, 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 it's a, it's like a hologram of what he's thinking on what he's feeling. Uh, and it's semi-sentient in the same way that we sometimes have, you know, um, voices in our head that we can't control, that, you know, we can't help but think this or that, even though we try hard. Like when you're trying to sleep and, you know, um, there's a voice in your head that's trying to keep you awake. Yeah, so it's semi, it's semi-independent. But they are, um, actually just aspects of the same thing, of the same person. And he's a kid. So it's really tough for him cuz he's got a lot of growing up to do and that's kinda the fun of it. My little Spider-Man style character. Okay, let's move on. Uh, I think I wanna draw Germinator. Hmm. Yeah, let's go Germinator. Um... Moritaka says, "Oh, I met a technical pen in Procreate since it has nice line variety. In, in real life, I use a dip pen because my technical pen wears out too easily." Uh, I'm using a G pen right now. I bought one in, in Kindu Konia. It's got a like, it's a school G pen, so it's got like a barrel. Um, so you don't have to bring ink around when you use it. And it's been pretty fun. Where is technical pen here? There it is. Ooh, I don't like that too much, Moritaka. I don't know. Yeah, it's a bit soft for me. Though I don't like that. It's a little too anti-alias for me, but like, you know, it depends on what look you're going for. But this is not, this is not what I'm looking for. Um, so I'm back to Baskerville. I really like Baskerville so far. Um, but yeah, if you like it, that's awesome. Like, you know, the reason they have all these brushes here is because they're trying to cater to like all the different wavelengths of artists and looks. So I'm glad you found a brush that works well for you. Uh, MatterSource Studios, "I remember Germinator from that homemade comic." Yes, yes. So I did that when I was in high school. Germinator is, um, one of my earliest superhero creations. Uh, and I wanted to bring him back. You know, I think he's super fun. Uh, I changed him up a little bit, like he's evolved a little bit. So, um, I'm gonna try to imply that things have happened since that mini-comic I did when I was in high school. And yeah, before I start applying all the funky things, like I'm gonna try to make sure this, um, this muscle stuff go, looks good cuz he's got like crazy big muscles. Yeah, I noticed that too, like with, 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 um, academic artists. Like if you go to a fine art school, um, and you do like traditional graphic, graphite drawings, um, there's a lot of back and forth on like the weight of the pencil, like how, how soft or how hard it is. Um, I don't know if you guys know this, but a standard number two pencil, like the yellow one that they give you in school, uh, that is HB. Um, and if you've seen the other grades, you have 2B, 1B, 2B, uh, 3B. It goes all the way to 9B. Um, and B is the softness, right? Um, so as, as you go higher in the B scale, uh, it's softer and darker. Basically the graphite lead gets softer and darker. And, uh, H, you get 2H, 3H and I think it goes all the way up to 4H. I don't know if there's higher than that. Um, but that's the harder leads, right? So you get, um, kind of a lighter weight in pencil. And these things all have uses. They all have uses. The uses depending on what kind of effect you wanna have on your artwork. So, but, but usually like the Goldilocks, like the middle one, uh, HB is the standard. Like most people are happy and content to work off of that. I feel like I'm so bad at drawing feet. Oh my gosh. Thank gosh, this guy's made of germs. I can be a little like loose and expressionistic with it. Oh my God, I really love this and I'm gonna now, Baskerville is gonna go to my, um, favorites. Did it go in? Yes, perfect. I love this brush now. I'm glad, I'm glad I found it. Thank you for provoking me to try it. I might end up making the rest of Secret Heart Attack with this brush. That's so funny. It's like a default brush I've been ignoring. Ooh, someone invoked Rob Liefeld's name. Um, that's awesome, that's awesome. I love that, um, I love that you know him. Yeah, I, I am, um, not a huge fan of Rob's, um, artwork. Um, even back then, you know, I'm, uh, I'm actually a 90s kid and I, uh, I, uh, I love the whole image explosion, but I was more taken by Jim Lee's art. Um, I was more obsessed by, um, with Jim Lee's art and Joe Madurera's art. Those are my like favorite artists of that era. But Rob is cool, like, you know, I liked his X-Force stuff. Um, I like how he drew Spider-Man. He took a lot of cues from, from Todd McFarlane um, and his juggernaut. There's something about like the crazy, hyper muscular, you know, style of all of that. You know, I think it's a, it's a very peculiar, particular flavor that helps define that era in comics and, you know, um, cool stuff. Plus he created Deadpool. Him, he, he made Deadpool and who else did Rob make? Prophet, the Youngblood people. I mean, there's a really good aborted Youngblood run, um, written by Alan Moore and drawn by Steve Scrosi. I think I'm pronouncing his name right. Scrosi or Scros? Um, really good artist, really wonderful little sort of Teen Titan style stories. And very overlooked because the whole thing never finished. So I think you can only find those Youngblood issues online. Like you go to those like, you know, shady, not to be named sites for, um, uh, getting digital comics. I can't say it out loud. Sorry, guys. Who are y'all's favorite artists? I'll go first. MatterSource Studios is asking, "Ryan Ottley and Pepe Laraz." Good choices, MatterSource Studios. Pepe in particular has been like, my gosh, like explosive in the last few years. House of X alone. Um, and he has this really cool thing he does where he, he draws it digitally, right? I think he still uses Clip Studio. Based on like all my like internet, um, uh, just like looking at his Twitter and going like, hmm, what's he doing? What's he using? Um, I, I might be wrong, but my suspicion is he's using a, a Wacom 22-inch tablet with Clip Studio. Uh, and that's what he does his layouts on. And then he prints those layouts out and he, he inks on it with traditional inks plus ballpoint pen, which is the crazy thing. That's how he gets those beautiful like, you know, hatches. It's ballpoint pen, guys, like the cheapest uni-ball. It's very encouraging. Oh my God, this is my new favorite brush. Kohei Horikoshi. I'm not familiar with Kohei. What, um, what have they done? Uh, I assume they're a manga artist? I'm not as well-versed in manga as I am with like, you know, a lot of Western comics. But yeah, let me know what to check out. I like, um, uh, Takeshi Obata? Or is it Tsugumi Obaba? I'm not sure which one of them. The Death Note and Bakuman team, the, the artist of that. I think it's Tsugumi Obaba. I like their work. I like Inyo Asano stuff. He has some cool stuff, guys. If you, if you don't follow the Man Ben Archipel channel, I really recommend it. Um, you have to watch with subtitles on unless, you know, you can speak Japanese. But, uh, they have these awesome, awesome documentaries where Naoki Urasawa, um, you know, who did Pluto and Monster and like all this other stuff. He's amazing mangaka. Uh, interviews other mangaka in Japan and ask them like really niche procedural questions about how they do their work. And it's really, really useful. Like there's a lot you can learn from those episodes. Oh my gosh, My Hero Academia. Okay, cool. So okay, now I know who you're talking about. Yeah, their work is, their work is, is straight fire. They're, they're really good. They're really good. I, uh, I cannot deny, um, their design sense, the dynamism, the, the awesomeness of the action scenes. They're, they've got some really good stuff going, so. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, I am very bad on My Hero though. But that's some good stuff. Am I drawing this right? Give me a sec. I have to look at my, um, my own comic to see if I'm drawing the character correctly. Oh, I'm drawing it wrong. I knew it. Okay, I had a feeling. Alright, let's, let's, let's pivot here. This is still very salvageable. So Germinator has like a giant G in the front. This is why I should always have reference. It looks kinda like a, you know, a, a power sign that's been tilted sideways. Like a computer power sign. There we go. It's a little twisted. It's gotta follow his, his pectoralis. Alright, and then, ooh, I really, really like this pen. That has a weird look to it. And the nice thing about Germinator is he's very, it, cuz it's very organic, but like sci-fi organic. So I love how, cuz when I was drawing him, at least, you know, I recall when I, when I was drawing him back in high school, I was very enamored with Ashley Wood's style. Um, Ashley Wood is this Australian painter who, who, who drew some Spawn comics. I think he did it in like a hybrid digital style. But, um, it's really good stuff. I was obsessed with it. So, um, that sort of fed into the design of Germinator, which is that, you know, not everything has to be symmetrical and perfect. Like it's great cuz he's a good contrast to like an artist I, I very much obsess over now, which is Frank Whiteley. I, I find Frank Whiteley to be just very... I mean, his, his proportions are weird, but he's very Apollonian. You know, he's very, his figures are stable. His anatomy is very well worked out. It's all just very clean and, and, and considered. So whereas Ashley Wood is like wild and expressive and everything sort of twisting and, you know, and breaking its own rules. And, and that's cool cuz it really works for the style of, um, art and stories that he does. Alright, Germinator is sorted. Oh, that's the other thing. If I'm doing the DC thing, I probably won't be able to stream that just cuz of NDAs and stuff. So I will still probably stream me working on Secret Heart Attack once a week, right? So Secret Heart Attack won't be completely, um, backburnered. It'll be, uh, I'll still keep working on it on this YouTube channel. Um, that can be kind of a through line while I'm busy on that project. Alright, Germinator's done. Let's draw... What's their name again? Gosh. I'm looking at the guide again. I'm trying to figure out which superhero this one is. It's not Sun Runner. It's not... Gosh, I can't even tell who it is. Are they even on this cover? Are they on this cover? That's weird. I don't think they're on the cover. Huh, okay, cool. So, um, I'm just gonna call her... Oh yeah, wait, no, I remember now. I think her name is, um, I think her name is... Tryage? Triptic? Triptic? I think that's her name. So Triptic, is it Triptic? Gosh, my poor brain. I don't even know my own comic anymore. You see, this is what happens when you make 100 like superheroes, 100 plus superheroes and then throw them all together. You forget who's who and have to like reference. Uh, anyway, this character, I'm gonna call them Sun Runner for now or Triptic or whatever their name is. They are my ultimate style characters. So they're government-sponsored. Um, they got their powers from a, some sort of government experiment. Uh, and they're used to doing like military operations. And because, I mean, I'm not gonna spoil too much of what the story's doing, but because they're, um, this is like a, some sort of multiversal crisis that they're dealing with. Uh, she's part of, um, Red Thunder's team. She's my, uh, realistic, uh, 2000-style superhero. No, speedster. I'm borrowing a lot from like Brian Hitch with this design, so you've got kind of the activewear, sportswear look to it. I'll show you in a little bit, once I get to the There we go. Okay. So I think it goes like that. She's got like a vest. I try to think of her like a marathon runner. You know, everything's supposed to be like really live and like um breathable and movable. Show a bit of the tricep. Boom, okay. The thing is unlike Germinator, this character needs a very symmetrical and realistic outfit, so. I have to make sure all the lines go the right way. And that I'm not like over favoring one side to the other. Cool, cool, cool. Oh wow, the chat really blew up. Pepa Laras, Jorge Jimenez, oh my god, I love Jorge Jimenez! So good. Uh, and Dan Mora, who I am, so I've been buying like random I'm not sure if I have, I've been buying random issues of like World's Finest, cause there's Dan Mora art in it. Uh, and Dan Mora actually drew a really good run of um, an indie book called um, Once in Future, which I really enjoyed. One of my favorite authors, um, Karen Gillan was the writer on that. And it's a fun story. I like that. Tatsuki Fujimoto, oh my god, yes, super fan! Uh, I actually have his um, oh, this is so bad. Do I have it here? Oh, here it is. So, I'm currently so I read all of Chainsaw Man up until, you know, the ending of that first part. And now I bought Fire Punch, so I'm gonna check that out. Um, it's still in plastic, see, I haven't read it. I'm gonna open it when I'm, I'm, I have an hour to like really indulge. And then I bought Fujimoto's other uh, books. These are the short stories he did when he was seventeen years old to twenty-one years old and twenty-two to twenty-six. Uh, and these are worth reading, especially if you're working on short stories, guys. Um, Fujimoto's like a, a very musical mangaka. Um, Olivier Coipel, of course, of course. Um, they are a child of um, the Stuart Immanant School of um, Comics. And um, definitely like one of the greats of that, that whole era. Still great. I have a signed print by him. Um, I managed to get one before COVID, so. He's a, he's a, one of my favorite artists. Wow, I love how the chat is naming all these amazing people that I'm a fan of. Yeah, you guys have good taste. Peach Momoko. Super duper love her work. Um, I think she's Japanese. Uh, someone asked, "Have you seen the first episode of My Adventures with Superman?" Yes, I have. Uh, the first episode is free on YouTube. Uh, and it actually popped into my radar while I was on the bus home from work uh, the other day and I just, I just I just fell into it. It's so nice to to watch a Superman story that is this refreshing, you know what I mean? Like it's so, it feels so new. Um, and they use all the, all the tricks, all the manga, um not manga, so much as like anime style conventions to make the whole story feel fresh and new. And they really got Clark's personality right. Like he's just genuinely a good person. He's trying to do the best he can. Um, I honestly, I, I don't like the Zack Snyder sort of brooding, grim and gritty Superman. I think Superman should be just like a good good, virtuous, um, kind person. You know, um, and his story should be about doing the right thing despite, you know, how hard things are. So one thing about this lady is if I recall correctly, she's got really complicated shoes. So I'm gonna try not to mess this up. I mean, they're so small. It's I don't need to get the details like one hundred percent right. It's not like people wouldn't notice, but still. You wanna do her justice to some degree. Plus, I think in her intro panel, which was the last page of the la, the first issue, I covered up these shoes. Her boots, her running boots. So just don't wanna mess it up. What does she look like in the next page? There we go. It looks something like that. Let's just screenshot that so I don't lose it. And jump back to here. And I'm gonna do Canvas, Reference, Image. And I'm gonna bring that image in. Great. And that'll help me not mess this up, okay? I think I was like at the New York Library when I was like designing all this stuff. It's coming back to me now. Uh, and I mentioned that because I was looking at like a lot of references there. Trying to get like the military look. This is so complicated. I'm complaining. Like past Andrew really made this hard. Ooh, let's change the sound. Give me a sec. That's a little too sad. Ooh, Juan Jose says, "Man of Steel is the hill I die on. It's amazing movie." His Superman is a good person living in realistic world where even if they say, say people, they'll still find something wrong with it. Hey, I um you know, I respect your opinion. Different strokes for different folks. And um I mean, honestly, like, I keep thinking about how I, Snyder is an amazing director. And I really liked his um, his sucker punch. Uh, very underrated movie. It's just, yeah, there's a lot of like Superman choices that I don't agree with personally, but you know. The nice thing about these superheroes is you can tell all kinds of stories with them. And they don't all have to be the exact same, you know, they can explore different, slightly different flavors. So Man of Steel can exist in the same universe as um Adventures of Superman, or the Bruce Timm Superman series. Or Christopher Reeve, you know, they're all valid interpretations. And you can just have preferences, which ones you prefer the most. But yeah, respect. I mean, I'm not the kind of guy who's like, oh my god, you have to like you know, you have to dislike what I dislike and you have to like what I like. Like, no, I think it's cool that, you know, we have a lot of tastes and, and we have um, interpretations that cater to them, you know. Alright. Oh shoot. Man, this, this lady takes a long time to draw. Um, what's it trying to do? I wanted a little there. And then her hands. And just so I don't get the proportions wrong, I'm good. This, this can go now. I'm gonna draw the hands first before I do all the other fancy stuff. Currently reading Astonishing X-Men is really good. Do you guys like it? I do. I do. Astonishing X-Men, Joss Whedon, John Cassidy. John Cassidy, it was like a back to basics thing. You know, I felt like I mean, I was reading all of these things chronologically, so um, the big thing before Astonishing X-Men was that Morrison had done New X-Men and it was like a huge, like radical change to the line. Um, which brought a lot of new ideas in and I, I love that. I love New X-Men. It's, it's probably my favorite X-Men run. Um, even more than House of X maybe. Um but what was nice was Astonishing X-Men kind of came in and brought back a lot of the flavor that had arguably been lost. A lot of the Chris Claremont flavor. That had arguably been lost during the Morrison run. Which was just so relentlessly inventive and pushing towards like new things that you know, a lot of people who, who loved the eighties Claremontian style of X-Men um felt like it had become a completely different book. So Astonishing X-Men brought back a lot of the, the good stuff. Um, and I think too, like after Joss Whedon's run, uh, it's followed up by a, a Warren Ellis run, which brings in some of the Morrison flavor back. So it's a really good one-two punch, you know what I mean? Uh, to see kind of the synthesis of like um like uh, these radically different approaches to the X-Men. And John Cassidy is just like he's one of those classic artists. Like, everything just looks classic when he draws it. You know, he has a Captain America run that's pretty good. Uh, but really it's his planetary stories, uh, with Warren Ellis that like premier like the, you know, one of the best superhero comics ever made. The best like explorations of the, the the pulp roots of the superhero genre. Alright, I think we are almost done with this lady whose name escapes me. Tryage or Sun Runner or whatever it is I, I intended. I'm sure if I looked at the script, um her name would be there. But she's one of the newer characters, so she's actually not based on a story that I'd done before, you know. Alright, good. Alright, that's her. One, two, three, let's go to I wanna draw Red Thunder last, so let's go to um Imaginon. And Imaginon is um, I don't know how if you guys, I'm gonna try to see if I can do a reprint. But my first book, uh, which I made back when I was in the Philippines, it's called Karakara Comics and it's an anthology of short stories. Um, and in it, um, I actually had like a bookend piece, which a thread that ran through the book about this um, this, this story hunter who started dealing with um genre shifts in, in short stories in, in the multiverse and all that stuff. It was wacky, wacky stuff, but he recruits this nun to his cause in the middle of the book. And um she ends up helping him uh, deal with the issue. She ends up becoming really pivotal to the um to solving the threat of the story. So I wanted to bring her back in Secret Heart Attack. And I imagine she's gone through all these other adventures and she's been changed um, as well. So she wears a blindfold because uh, she's wielding something called a metagon, which is this sort of like yeah, imagine like a super meta styled superhero. Like even more so than Animal Man, where they're very aware of the genre conventions and they're just like annoyingly always talking about um how all of that could work. That's Imaginon. Uh, and she is like Mother, like Mother Earth, who's the other character? Let's see if I can show. Here's Mother Earth in page three. That's her, Mother Earth. Like Mother Earth, she's really pivotal to the story, but I kind of background her. I background all the female characters at the start because um I'm trying to reflect the main character's journey where he's um, he lost his father. And it's all about like, you know, father figures at the start. Uh, and the mother is the villain, you know? Um, at least for the first for the first act and like the first half of act two. So all the female characters are backgrounded or evil until he realizes that he's being a total idiot. And then they, they start to come in and, you know, he starts to see the value of all of that. So it's kind of a storytelling choice, but um that's sort of to explain some of my thinking. And this is her falling from the sky. She's got this sword which she picked up in the final story of Karakara Comics. It's um the Sword of Datu Puti. Um, who is a, a brave warrior from an alternate um, colo, pre-colonial pre-Hispanic Philippines. Um, where all the tribes were sort of like um it was like a rainbow of tribes. And he was from the white tribe, Puti. Um so he ends up joining the story hunters and doing all this stuff. so he ends up joining the story hunters and doing all this stuff and she's using his sword for some reason. So I assume something ba- very bad happened to Datu Puti. And now, um Imaginon has to like carry on. That said, I really like I really like the, the nun with the sword, nun with the gun trope. I think it's just a cool design thing, so um, that's part of what I'm having fun with, with this character. And they're, they're a they're a combatant, but they're also like a nun, so I uh, I went to a Jesuit school in the Philippines and we always had nuns around, so I think that's like part of the when I was growing up. That's part of the influence here. Badass nun. Okay, let me check the chat. Uh, I'm gonna close the stream in about uh, ten minutes. Just FYI, so you can pace yourselves. Wow, I love the conversation people are having here. The One Piece is real. Hello, sir. Welcome, welcome. Does the iPad allow you to print your Procreate art on a non-apple printer? Sorry, this is a dumb question. I'm wanting to test print on a small mini card plan. But don't know where to start. In my manga, the main character has depression. I had the idea to make the comic go from full black and white to slowly become more colorful as it heals towards the end. So yes? The answer is yes, it'll work on a non-apple printer. There actually is no apple printer. All printers are, um yeah, Apple hasn't made one yet. I'd love them to make a printer, cuz I feel like they, you know the problem with printers these days is they're so predatory. They, they try to, you know they try to nickel and dime you, so you keep buying ink from them, so it's really hard. But it should work. Um, you would go to share, right? Um, and then like, you know, I would print it. And then there should be a print, um dialogue here. And if your printer is connected through wifi, like this is my printer here, can you see it on the screen? Um you should be able to you know, deal with the media quality and all this other stuff, presets. Let's, let's make it black and white draft. And then just press print and it should go. Assuming you've set up your printer, okay? Um, and assuming it's, it's good on wifi, it should be fine. Uh, otherwise, I don't know how you'd get the information to your printer. Like you might have to connect through the USB-C port and then do all this other stuff. Anyway, hope that helps. Um, I don't know if you can hear in the background, but my printer has wrapped up and it's starting to deal with it. Woo, okay, so how many figures do we have left? We have one, two, three figures left. Jin Draw, welcome. Welcome to the stream. This is, this is Mother Earth. Oh. I love drawing her. She's so cool. When I draw her, I try to keep like I try to keep in mind the elegance. You know what I mean? Plus, she's, she is the only character with this sort of, um at least for now, with this sort of big, big girl body type. And part of, part of, um my goal with this design is to like show how that body type can be so beautiful. You know, so she's, she's, she's um she's floating around. She is the, Mother Earth is um, you know, they call her Gaia in the story. Uh, but she is the spirit of the earth, of the planet. Um, and she is an eco warrior type superhero. Obviously, because you know, her alignment is towards the, the, um the health of the planet. Um, but she's also like one of the wisest, um characters in the story. And uh I just love, I love her design. I love that you can see sort of like, you know, she's basically a giant like planet earth. Ah, this is so relaxing. See, this is what I love. I love, um, I'm gonna try to do this more often. I love just chilling out to some music, drawing a comic. You know, in the evening. No emails, no, no, um no office drama, nothing crazy. It's just, you know losing yourself in the joy of making things. Hanging out with fellow artists, talking about your favorite comics. Getting recommendations, like that's that for me is like bliss. So thank you for being here and being a part of chat and hanging out. And sharing your, um your influences and your inspiration. This is um this is why I uh, I like doing this. Mattersore Studios, I'll see you next time. Thank you for coming. Jin Draw asks, bro, what can you say about Deadpool and Wolverine behind the scenes photos? I am um I am hyped. I am hyped. I'm all over it. I'm very excited. You know, uh, there's, there's, there, there are people who say like, it's so dumb that Wolverine has a yellow costume, you know what I mean? Why would you do that? Um, and people forget, like especially this was like brought into high relief during the Morrison run, but think about it, like when Wolverine is with the X-Men, he is technically a rescue worker. He's like a mutant rescue worker. And the thing about rescue workers in the real world, they wear bright patches. Um, and they wear brightly colored costumes with like reflective panels or like really neon orange or yellow. Because when you're a rescue worker, you wanna be seen. You wanna be very visible. So I really, really like that they have like the, the full-on yellow Wolverine costume. I don't know if they're gonna go for that story angle. Like it would be cool if they did, but you know, that puts a funny movie, so they might be just doing this for laughs. But, I mean, Hugh makes it work. It looks good on him. And, and I'm super excited for this movie. I'm uh, especially since it's the first sort of like Fox property that Marvel's gonna be handling. And I'm curious if they can, you know keep the magic going. I'm also curious if it's gonna feed into like the fu- the future of how the X-Men will be dealt with in, in the MCU. Uh, cuz like, gosh, they, they really please let them get that right, you know? I'm such an X-Men fan. I'm so crazy for X-Men. Um, that I want, I want them to do it right. I want them to capture all the, the angst and joy and, um insanity of that property. I want them to get all the characters right. It's so good. Yeah, I'm so happy they're finally putting Hugh in the suit too. Yeah, and he looks good. He can rock it. Plus really, like, you know, um it's about time they really embraced the colorfulness of superhero comics and you know, the, the source genre that they're pulling from. I honestly felt like a- as much as, you know, I, I enjoy the Brian Singer like X-Men movies and stuff, this whole like Matrix style black leather thing always felt to me like, you know like unnecessary. Like you're trying to, to make something serious that doesn't need it, you know? It isn't needed to be, to be serious. Okay, that is Mother Earth drawn. And then, let's draw the painter. This character um, is inspired by one of my painting teachers. He is like the Doctor Strange of the cast. He uh, he has a cosmic, um, painting palette. And it allows him to edit reality. You know, it allows him to paint over, um, things that are going on, so he's a really fun character to play around, very, very meta and strange. Um, and also his dialogue is, is quite like if you, if you've ever studied art academically, you'll, you're gonna find it to be quite a joy. Let's see if I can get this right. Bicep. Insertion point. Two. Hand. My sketch isn't that detailed, so I'm kind of like pre-forming this. There we go. That'll work. That'll do. He's got a magic paintbrush too, so you know? That's a lot of fun. Um for, no one asked, but it's a uh it's a long handled number two brush. Um, I chose that cuz it's my, uh, that's also my favorite brush when I'm oil painting. Like it gives you the most reach and also it allows you to noodle in details, cuz I'm a noodler. I'm a detail noodler, as you can see me drawing this super tiny part of like the whole page that nobody will ever see, but, you know? Can't be helped. There we go. I really, really like this inking brush, Baskerville guys. It's default on Procreate, so like check it out if you're Procreate. Cuz uh, I'm, I'm very into this. I think I'll be using this a lot. Alright, and then the last bit is the painter's um cape. I always wanted to look a little bit like a Tiepolo painting. Uh, Giovanni Batista Tiepolo, amazing painter, but really amazing like renderer of cloth. If you Google his stuff, um so I want I want his cape to be a reference to that. So always trying to make it go around in weird shapes. Plus, this, this is a cape that stained in um in a lot of random like paint marks. At least I think so. Where is that? There we go. That's him. That's the painter. Yeah, so his cloak will have a lot of paint marks, so it's just gotta make a weird, interesting shape up there. Let's go back there. Boom. I mean, but he's so tiny. I don't know if I'll even have like a room, so webs. We'll just do it. And then if anyone spots it, or if it if it shows up in the final, it shows up in the final, you know? Um alright, and we are at about an hour of streaming, so I think I should call it a night. I will leave Red Thunder for next time. Uh, thank you for being here, guys. Thank you for hanging out tonight. Um, I hope you had a good work session. Um, I feel like I had a good work session. That was one, two, three, four, five, six figures. Um, in, in the hour, so some good progress, you know? Not gonna conquer the world in an hour, but we'll, we'll just move the needle a fart a little bit. Uh, I'm wishing you all a good week ahead. Um, I hope you have uh a kind and um, relaxing week. Uh, and I hope your projects um, get some good progress on them. May you ever be inspired. Have a good night. Peace. There we go. How do I stop? Am I stopping? Lol, I think my um, my computer's hanging. Scheitze. And I think I've run into problems. Uh, I'll be right back. Sorry guys, I need some um I'm getting some outside help to like help me get this fixed. So it's stuck here and
Okay, go to the Apple menu. Force quit. And force quit OBS.
OBS? I don't see it. Oh, there we go.
There you go.